When they played Seattle, I was here at the DC United Playoff Game. I brought a friend of mine who had never been to a professional soccer match before. He came away with a couple of things. The stadium, how incredible it was. The genius of Thierry Henry, how great Luis Robles was. And I kid you not, he talked about the supporters and what it was to be in that kind of atmosphere. These guys up here, they know what you guys mean to the team.
Yeah, Petey knows.
Hang on a second.
There's no no shit.
Hang on a second. Hang on a second.
Two years of success and you fire him?
Guys, you're gonna get a chance when you get to the microphone. Here's the thing, these guys know what the fans mean to the team. There's plenty of teams in New York that might have a disgruntled fan base that don't make the playoffs. They don't give them a forum like this.
You had to have fans.
It's a very neat opportunity.
They tried to get better!
Guys, come on.
Being nervous.
Come on, let's have a little civil discussion, alright? They're giving you an opportunity to ask questions, questions that everyone wants to ask. Like I said, there's a lot of teams that would not allow this. So here's the way it's gonna work, everyone. Raise your hand, Phil or Steve is gonna bring you up to the microphone. If you could, try to keep your questions relatively brief, we don't need to hear a speech. And there's no follow-ups, if you could, no follow-ups, because chances are, your follow-up question will get asked by somebody else. There's a lot of people in here that want to ask questions. It's a town hall meeting, that's the forum, that's the setup, there's no media here, except for me, but this is all off the record. So this is where it's gonna start.
Media, right?
If you could, if you could, give everyone, give them your name, how many years you've been a season ticket holder, then address your question to whoever it is you want to address it to, you want to address it to everyone, Luis, Jesse Marsh, that's how we'll do it. I'll start it off, since I do have the microphone, and let's see, alright? I'll address this one to Ali. Within the past week, you guys made a big decision, you decided to make a coaching change. What was the reason behind the coaching change?
Thanks, first, I just wanna thank everyone for coming to this conversation. We really started a relationship. It was a difficult decision, of course. You know, my compass has always been trying to do what's best for the club, you know, that's integrity. You know, Mike, you know, he was a good coach for our team, at the end of the day.
Don't even fucking say his name!
We're looking, we're looking to take this club to a new, a new platform. And we've got a new approach, in terms of what we're trying to do with regard to youth, what we're trying to do with regard to youth development, what we're trying to do with USL Pro. So, to give you guys a little bit of information, about an hour and a half ago, I just received a signed agreement from USL Pro. So we'll start that next year, or we'll start that now.
Why did you fire Mike Petey?
That's it!
I'm trying to answer that, guys. What we're trying to do with regard to science and medical and that platform, we really wanna integrate every area of sports into our-
Stop asking the question! Why did you fire Petey? Straight up! No corporate lingo, just answer the question!
I think that's fine, listen, for me, the greatest asset of any organization is your people, and that's your fans, that's your staff, that's your players.
Why did you fire Petey? No more bullshit, why did you fire Petey?
No corporate lingo, why did you fire him?
Guys, once again, everyone is gonna get a chance to ask a question. If you could, go to the microphone, let's also remember, there are women in here, some kids, enough of the cursing. Guys, if we're gonna, if we're gonna, if we're gonna get anywhere, I'm gonna have to be able to try to answer these questions, you're gonna have to give me a shot, that's why we're all here. We're trying to- Jesse Marsh embodies everything that you want in a coach. He knows how, he knows how to integrate all areas of our business, from our youth development platform to our first team. Alright, let's go, who, raise your hand, Phil and Steve, go over to the microphone. Thanks, guys. If you could, once again, state your name, how many years you've been a season ticket holder, and address a question to anyone on the panel.
Yeah, so, my name's Alan, I've been a season ticket holder since '09 when I moved to New York. My question for anyone who'll take it, I mean, Petey got fired after the two best years in our history, how long does a new guy have to win MLS Cup before he can shake him?
Thanks, Alan, I appreciate your question. You know, MLS Cup is the ultimate goal, that's what we wanna do, we wake up every day, we work hard, we wanna win. So, that's what we wanna do, that's our goal for this year. We think Jesse embodies that, he's gonna help the team.
That's not the question! Answer the question! Will you fire him if we don't win the cup this year?
You ready for Congress? You ready for Congress, what's going on? Answer the questions!
The ultimate goal, of course, is to win MLS Cup. We'll go out to train hard, work hard, and we wanna win MLS Cup, that's the goal.
Okay, so what happens to the coach?
If you could, seriously, young man, if you could, just thank you, and then go to the microphone, Phil or Steve, take the next person, please.
My name is Robert Covax, I've been a season ticket holder for two years, this would have been my third year. Bottom line, you know, you have whatever your reasons are for whatever you wanna do, we don't believe in it. So, we don't wanna be part of it, so, why won't you give me a refund on my deposit on season tickets? Period, end of story, because I don't wanna be part of them, thanks.
So, first of all, we're sorry to see you go, and-
This is the guy that fired Arena!
We've gotta respect your point of view, Ryan.
How am I gonna support something like this?
We have a company policy where we don't refund season tickets, just as every-
Corporate policy!
Every team in New York has a similar policy, so-
We don't have tickets yet, we have a deposit. If you believed in it, you would give me my money back. I don't believe in it, you believe in it, that's fine.
Correct, so we believe in our policy, we're gonna stand by it like every other club does in New York, and we'll move on, and hopefully over time, we'll win you back, but we're sorry to leave you, and we gotta respect your point of view.
Can you give us a refund in return?
Hang on a second, guys. Dave Pecoraro?
This is my, my second year as a season ticket holder. Thank you, Luis, for your great goalkeeping, we really appreciate it. And this is something my son put together. He's a real soccer fan here, and he said, "After firing the only coach to win a trophy for this club, how will you implement your top-to-bottom 300-page development vision on a one-year contract, which is shorter than some of your players, and with an undecorated sub-500 head coach, when you can only hold the season-ticket holders hostage with a non-refund policy until August?"
I think Mark already answered the question about the season tickets, I'll talk about-
Then answer the real question!
Answer the question about Jesse, so what was your question directed at the general manager about coaching? Or the sporting director, I should say?
Basically, how are you going to implement a 300-page plan, when basically, you have until August, when the season-ticket holders for 2016 have to come forward? How will you implement that, given the fact that, given the track record, with all due respect to the new coach, the record is the record? And you've just fired a coach that is well above 500, who has won the only trophy in club history, and you brought in a coach who has a sub-500 record, that's just the fact, I'm a former math teacher, I'm just looking at the numbers. It's nothing personal, absolutely nothing personal.
We've already started, so, you know, this project is already begun. We're working very hard, Jesse spoke to every player, I spoke to every player, we called every staff member. We're looking forward to starting preseason. We had a successful draft, we'll have a supplemental draft on Tuesday, which we're looking forward to. So, we've already started, we won't be able to implement every program and policy in place by, by the summer, but we're making strides in the right direction. Again, I mean, we're waking up every day and working as hard as we possibly can. We wanna do things for the right reasons, we understand why you're passionate, we understand why some of you may not quite understand your decision. But, you know, we hold ourselves to a standard where we're putting the club first, and every decision we make, everything that we do-
You're putting your career first!
Luis, if you could, talk about having Jesse now as a coach, yes, being a player here, what does that mean?
Don't do that to him!
Actually, before I answer, the white t-shirt, what's your name?
John.
John, how did you develop that voice, because I need that voice on the field!
I'm the four-man behind you every match!
Alright, so-
But I won't be, I won't be, because unfortunately, you guys have, have done everything in your power, screw, not you, Robles, screw it up. I'm only gonna go to road games this year. I'm not coming to this stadium, I'm not sending a dime in this stadium anymore. Until Red Bull Stadium, I'm gonna fire you, still, until you're fired! Robles, I love you, I'll always support you, I'll watch you in an Ironbound Bar when you guys play home. I will go to Philly, I will go to New York.
Our feeling, I've spoken to a lot of the players, especially the ones that have been here for the last couple of years, especially the ones that I feel have left a lot of sweat investment on the field. We understand, right when we sign, coming from college or as amateurs to become professionals, that there's a certain business method to what goes on. And after the first couple of months of becoming a professional, we start to understand that there's things that are out of your control. But, our MO hasn't changed, we wanna come, we wanna be the best team possible, we wanna be a hard-working team that the fans, the supporters, the organization will be proud of.
Haven't you been that so far?
You have been.
Mike was very successful, there's no doubt about that, and the results speak for themselves. Where we stand now, the players are also very excited where the club's going. We look forward to playing for Jesse, we look forward to working with Ali. And I don't think any of that momentum that we had at the end of the season has been left. And the reason I say that is because I'm speaking purely from a player's standpoint. I know that the guys are itching to get back out there, next week when we fly to Florida, we're gonna put in the work. And I hope that that hard work represents the results that will make you guys proud, and enough that you guys will come and support us every game.
I'm a, I've been a season ticket holder since 2006. Before I say my question, I think it's sort of shameful that you brought Luis out there, and we all love to be your flagpole. My question's more for Mark. Petey was huge to create a connection between the club and the fans. Now the club has, still has, is named after its owner, Energy Drink, its logo is essentially an Energy Drink logo. There's teams in Austria, Germany, Brazil, that are exactly the same. How does this team represent this area and the people in it in any way?
Good question, certainly, we won't let a coach or one player define what this team is all about. This team is about 20 years of history, from Mike, Tab Ramos, Amado Guevara, Juan Pablo, Juan Hel. All the players that have come through the door, so that have built a tradition over the years. We're gonna keep honoring that, and we're gonna build on that, and you'll be very proud of it. The identity of this club moving forward, it has not, the identity of this club, guys, was not defined by one individual, it's defined by what you guys bring every game, and what 30 guys bring every game, every day in, day out, and work their ass off for you. And we're gonna continue building on that.
Sell the team!
But we don't know what it's, it's like, you know, we don't know what our identity is, it's a huge problem.
Quickly to, to remark on what I said, I actually volunteered to be here. I felt it was important that there was a voice from the players, representing the players. I'm very grateful for the last two and a half years, and what the organization's done for me. I just want you guys to at least embrace the fact that the players are excited about where we're going, and the vision that the two, the two guys in charge have cast. And even though we haven't had a training session yet, they've been very thorough and honest with the players, so this is where we stand, and this is why I'm here. No one forced me to come here, I'm here because we also people representing, and I hope you guys understand this one.
Hi, my name is Steve, I've been a season ticket holder since Red Bull Arena came to be. This is for Ali, you keep talking about vision, and we understand that. What exactly about Mike Petey's coaching style didn't fit that vision that you had? That you had to get rid of him after a successful season? And being a homegrown player who kind of made good and brought the, you know, brought faith and hope to the team? You come in and you said it didn't fit the vision, could we have more specifics on why it didn't fit that vision?
Thank you, thank you for your question. So, I watched every game in 2013, I've watched every game in 2014, and really tried to analyze the style of play. We wanna be uptempo, high-energy, dynamic type of play. And the reality is, that didn't happen over the last two years. Guys, hey, we're not gonna get anywhere unless you let me finish the question. So, what we need to do is, what we're implementing moving forward is a platform where we're having youth development, USL Pro, we're implementing a nice performance center that will incorporate science and technology, as well as analytics. And we needed a coach, we need a coach that can string together all those different areas in a way that's innovative and sophisticated, and in every way that the top clubs in the world are performing, as well as every other top sports team in the world. And Jesse can do that, Jesse can do that in a very, very smart way, and that's why it was important to hire him.
You know, I want Jesse, why don't you, this is someone who has been a coach in the league, assistant coach in the US National Team, went to Harvard. Let him give you, not everybody knows that, let him speak for me, tell you about his philosophy.
Guys, I, I, like, believe it or not, I love this passion, okay? And, and there's a lot of clubs in this league that would have none of this, okay? And so, I, I know how privileged I am to be the coach of this team, I'm excited to be here. I know I have a huge challenge ahead of me, alright? However, you know what, I'll take whatever I can get, quite honestly, because I'm proud to be here, and I'm gonna give everything I have, every day.
What a man, sir.
There's great, there's great leaders in this team already, okay? There's, there's great establishment in this team already. I'm not here to take things 180, alright? I'm not here to take away the identity of what the club is. Listen, I said the Energy Drink comment, I've already been corrected on that more than once, I apologize for that. Honestly, that was a metaphor for what I believe this game needs to look like, okay? An exciting, uptempo game, that's what we're gonna incorporate, alright? I know we have great leaders here already, like Luis, Dax, Bradley, I've had great conversations with these guys. And you know what, they're hungry for more, they are, they're hungry for more, and that's what we're gonna bring, alright? This is gonna be, this team survived so much on its talent, okay? And making plays, which was fun to watch, don't believe me, the four years of Thierry Henry, I loved watching it as much as you guys did. But we, I think we can all understand that this needs to take a little bit of a shift, right? Away from the superstars, and more into an identity of a group of guys who's ready to give everything they have for each other.
Yeah, that's what Mike Petey was, don't thank him.
Listen, this is not, but this is not about Mike or not, or, this is about, now, what's the future? Where are we taking the future of this club? How, and who can gather the experiences to now make this something that is sustainable over time?
Do you know how many times we've heard that?
Guys, guys, listen, once again, the microphone-
Don't fence, don't fence!
Sir, sir, sir. Sir, sir, the microphone is here for everybody.
Let me, I always, can I respond to him, please, for a second? I'll, I'll be honest with you, the first conversation I had with these two men was, what's gonna make us different? Okay, I'm not, I'm not naive to think that now I'm the guy that can come here, and now all of a sudden I have all the answers. But I will tell you this, okay? Mark is a humble man who works his ass off, okay? Ali is a smart, humble man as well, who works his ass off. And that's what I'm gonna do as well. So for the fir-, listen, for the first time, I think there are people, this isn't an implication on any one individual, okay? But for the first time, I feel like there's a collective of leadership in this organization of competence and hard work ethic. That doesn't mean we have all the answers, and I'm not trying to say anything about anybody in the past, okay? But I feel strongly that we are gonna be able to implement a direction, a direction that's gonna take this club to a new plateau. And ultimately, it's gonna matter, what's gonna matter is, what are the results? What are the results, okay? If we lose, you're gonna hate me, you're gonna hate me. If we win, maybe you'll, maybe he'll learn to put up with me, okay? But in the end, let's make sure that we give Luis, Luis, and this team a chance to go out on the field, succeed, and compete. Because that's what this is, it's about these guys and the opportunity to show what they have, and show the character of what this club is.
Hang on a second, we have someone at the microphone, hang on a second. Young man, go ahead.
My name is John Craig, I've been a season ticket holder since 2010, and I wanna take a little bit of a, like a side road from the narrative right now. All the news we've heard from Red Bull so far has been management changes, you know, losing Henry, losing Olave, players going away from the club. And I feel like all the other news in the MLS has been Gerard coming, Lampard, every other name to every other club but Red Bull. Almost had out the door back, you know, he can go have fun in Canada. So I just wanna know, guess, Ali, do you have any plans to bring in, you know, a big star, any star, something to kind of bolster the squad that we have right now?
So, look, so we're trying to bring in some players, you know, we've got some irons in, in the fire right now. To answer your question, we were interested in Josie, you know, I mean, I, I've known the rules inside and out, and, you know, a lot of the rules, I wrote. And so we were in on Josie, the reality was that we were so far in the allocation ranking, that we would have had to mortgage our entire future in order, in order to get Josie. And on top of that, the economics of the deal were so massive, that coupled with where we were in the allocation, having to mortgage our future, coupled with the fact that we've got Bradley Wright Phillips, and we're already strong in that position, it made it prohibitive for us to, to go out and get Josie. Now, as it pertains to other players, of course, we wanna strengthen the squad, you know, I'm hearing that we wanna strengthen the squad in, in the, in the center of, of defense. That's important to us, we're working every day. Just an hour ago, I was on the phone with a couple agents, trying to bring in players, trying to bring in reinforcements. Again, Jesse mentioned earlier, we've got some good guys, some good core guys that work their butts off. We got Dax, we got Lloyd, we got Luis, we've got some guys where we really believe that they're gonna step up in some leadership positions, this is their opportunity. Now, if we can bring in some players that can complement those guys and also take a leadership position, we feel really confident, we feel really good about things.
Next question, hang on a second, Phil or Steve, hang on, we got somebody. Hey, David.
This is like a school board here. I think this is for Mr. Thirteenth, so I've, my name's David, I've been a season ticket holder for nine years, this is my ninth year. My frustration with the Red Bulls is really far exceeds your tenure here, and for the amount of capital that the ownership group has, I've found it to be a poorly managed organization, really manifest by the incredible turnover that happens every year. So it's an organization towards a team where there's really not a heart to it, because so much of the players have turned over. So that's my observation, but my question relates, I was very excited with the strategy for your youth academy, but it's been my observation that your youth academy seems not well-integrated into the team. There is, for example, I think in your 18s this year, there's probably 15% have been all the way from the beginning. And if this, and this really is the preeminent youth academy, you have way too high of a turnover, and you don't have sufficient throughput into the first team, and there's not enough linkage between the two. So could you articulate a little bit your plan around, to improve that?
So part of that plan is, we're very excited again about USL Pro, because that's really right in between, it's below the first team, but above the, above the youth development system. So we're really looking forward to that platform to integrate both pieces. And you spend so much, you invest so much in youth development platform. You need, you need an opportunity for these guys to spread their wings and to play, and to grow and develop, so USL Pro will provide that platform. And then you've got guys that are kind of on the bottom half or fringe of the first team in MLS, and we need to get those guys games. You know, about five years ago, I was in Salt Lake for the All-Star game. And one of my friends at the time, Robbie Russell, who played for Salt Lake, was hanging out with him and a couple of his teammates. And the guy that I was, that was sitting next to me, he was a goalkeeper for, for Salt Lake, and he said, "You know what, I haven't played a game in four years." And I took that back to New York, and I said, "Guys, we've got a guy on our roster, on one of our rosters, that we're investing in heavily, he's a promising young player, he hasn't played a minute in four years." So, that week, fortunate, I raised it with my boss, and we started working on this reserve league thing. And we knew that would be kind of a precursor to this USL Pro relationship, very proud about that. You know, last year, we started the relationship, it's a two-year deal, right now, the league's in negotiations, finalizing a long-term agreement. We're starting our standalone team, really, really excited about it. Bob Montgomery is head of our academy, I brought him down to the combine, we brought him down to the combine, because he needs to be involved in our scouting of first-team players, he needs to be involved in our development. This was the first time Bob had ever been invited to the combine. He's coming down to preseason with us as well, because it's important that he understands what it takes to be a first-team player, how we're playing, style of play. We're creating characteristics for every player on our field, so that we know, these are the characteristics of a left-back that we like. So that Bob and his guys are developing that, that same left-back from you, from, from a very young age, all the way through, through our first team. So I made it very clear to Jesse, this is who we are, we are a team that develops players, that plays young players, and then we're going to embrace that style of play.
You know, so, I've been here 10 days, and this is, this is the most unique time I've had, I'll say that. But I'm amazed at the resources of this club, the manpower, the facilities. It's the biggest club in the US I've ever been around, it's, it's privileged here, okay? And, but I will say that, there hasn't been a lot of emphasis put in place on how everything functions together. And that, now, when I look at my role, of course, every coach's job is to get what happens on Saturday on the field right. But in order to get that right, I feel like we have to now iron out so many of the relationships from the technical team, to make sure that we're all aligned in our understanding of what it's gonna take to make this thing successful. So, yes, I know when you say one year, I have, okay, so if I have one year, I need to win, I get that, okay? But part of me winning is gonna involve how we integrate all our resources, and then I look at this as, not just one year, I'm, I'm confident that with these group of guys, that we can be successful in year one. But I'm looking more down the line, that five, 10 years from now, you're right, we probably have the best youth academy in the country. Why don't we have five players on the field? We need to do that, okay? This is my, this is, I look at this holistically, okay? So I look at it, whatever, from the youth academy, scouting, my job, Mark's job, the fans, okay? I want this to be a club that we can all be proud of, and we can all recognize as something that's different.
Sell, change the name, we're not a drink.
This is, this is, these are controlled, this is controllable, we control what we can control, alright? These things I feel like we can control, and we can make better.
Thanks, David. Next, you have, if you could, Phil or Steve, a little, let this gentleman go first, you can go ahead.
My question's for Luis, because to, to everyone else up here, I'm really just a customer, I'm a supporter. Luis, how did you feel, I read online that you actually found out that Petey got fired by Googling it? How did that, how did that feel for you?
Like the Red Bull way, that's communication!
Come upstairs and come meet your, your new coach.
Well, I didn't know exactly what happened, I went to bed, woke up in the morning, six in the morning, because I have three-month-old. She just doesn't know the time, the time they did. But anyways, woke up, and I had about half a dozen text messages from different guys on the team, and the question was, "Did Mike get fired?" So, to my surprise, I didn't have an answer for that, so I Googled it, and I saw that the story had leaked late, late that night. And so I, I, I mean, at that point, I had to wait and see what came in, came out during the day. Ali contacted everyone on the team before it became official, he contacted everyone before we found out who the new hire was. And so from our standpoint, I'll be really brief about this, when I left college and became a professional, I was really excited about it. I signed my first professional deal, I thought I was gonna get a sick car and a hot girlfriend.
Didn't we all, Zach? But what I quickly realized is that the game never changes. It's still a beautiful game. Doesn't matter if it's backyard or in Red Bull Arena. But what does change is that it becomes a business. The moment that you sign a contract and you are now tied to that contract, there are certain aspects of the game that you can't control. There's certain aspects of the business that you can't control. And so you learn as a professional that you deal with it. And I understand that my objective is to go out there and sell the ball. My objective is to, uh, be the best teammate possible, to work hard, to make this organization proud. So that didn't change. Of course, the landscape changed a little bit. But that's just something that, whether you're a seasoned vet or a rookie, uh, it comes with the territory and you do the best you can to deal with it. But that aspect is, is out of my control. Sir, sir, I just wanna elaborate a little bit on that. You know, I, uh, I wanna give you a little bit of context. We're all here on, uh, that episode. So, um, you know, I made the decision and I drove down to Red Bank, you know, where the community, where, where Mike lives. And, you know, in my mind, um, you know, I really was trying to think about, um, the best way to do something like this. But there's, there's never a best way, um, to do something like this. But I met with Mike face-to-face. He earned that, every man earns that. Um, and we had a long conversation, probably about 30, 35 minutes. And I talked to him about why we made the decision. You know, he asked why, we went back and forth. Uh, I told Mike, you know, I wanted him to be part of the club. And when he's ready, um, he has a place at the club. Um, we, you know, started to even, you know, work with Major League Soccer to, uh, define opportunities for him. Um, and if I'm, you know, in terms of being sorry, you know, I'm sorry that the, uh, the, uh, the story leaked. It wasn't, it wasn't on Red Bull's part. We wanted it to go down a lot differently than the way it happened. Um, but the fact that it leaked, um, when it did, uh, it was important that we got to state that out. And so, um, what I needed to do was send a note to all of our players in advance of, of an official announcement, uh, and that's the way it went down. So it was unfortunate that it leaked. Um, again, it wasn't, we didn't leak it.
Man, who did?
That's the social media.
You gotta tell somebody in order for the social media to.
Okay, like to, uh, one, thank you for hosting tonight. Um, season ticket holder since '96, 20 years. I, I appreciate the comments over there, but I'm here to hear them state what they have to state when we ask questions. And Jesse, good luck, welcome to the front. 20 years ago, I never imagined there'd be a stadium like this. I was a Cosmos supporter, an F bolded. You know the history here with coaches. Good luck, wish you well, want stability as fans. But my one concern moving forward, and change is always, it, it brings about the trepidation that we exhibit. And of course, Pecky was important to the organization at different levels. We recognize that, and I think, you know, members up there recognize it. Moving forward though, what always kept me coming back to Metro Stars and Red Bulls was the investment in an entertainer. Adon Adoni, a Ramos, a Gualvarra. You go through it, and of course, Angel, and most recently, Henri. The club has to compete for our dollars to entertain, not just win. It's gotta be win and entertain. What vision or what positions do you see moving forward? I know you're not gonna talk about players, I understand that. But what players are you, in key positions, eyeing up to compete with the neighbors in New York? They're stealing the show right now. And they're more exciting than where we are. I don't think we have a team that, and they're hardworking, they're honest players, but they're not entertainers. What move forward are we gonna see in replace Henri?
I, 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 I respect your comment. Uh, I think our players are entertainers. Um, I think they go out every day and give everything they can to not only entertain you, but also, uh, to, uh, to win the games on Saturday. So, uh, we're bringing in all the types of players that we feel can complement this club and that embrace this club. Um, we've got tons of passionate people out there. We've gotta bring passionate players in, into our team as well. So we're creating, we've got this philosophy, we've got this approach. We're gonna bring players in that fit that approach, fit that philosophy. And I understand why you may not be passionate about some of us right now, but we're gonna, we're gonna wake up every day and we believe that we'll earn your respect over time.
My question is, what position have you identified as a weakness, an area of improvement? If you were to target any player, whether they're low, is it a midfielder? Is it a striker? Um, and, and again, I, I think this is a great, I, listen, I love the team. 20 years in, I'm, I'm all in. But I wanna be entertained when I pay for my dollars. I watch, I don't wanna watch Stoke. I wanna watch Arsenal. I, I wanna watch. You know, so that's not what I'm looking for, what Jesse's looking for, what you identify as a coach. Listen, I'm with you. We, we hope you win.